Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the June 2nd Town Council meeting. This is our annual town meeting. It's 7:00 PM. Clerk Samino, I will turn it over to you for a roll call, which all votes this evening will be done via roll call due to the video conferencing we are in.
Council Erica.
Here.
Council Connors.
Here.
Council Flaherty.
Here.
Council Hume.
Here.
Council Mackin.
Here.
Council O'Brien.
Present.
Council Ringus.
Yep.
Council Ryan.
Here.
Council Sasha.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. I just want to start the meeting just with a brief comment on what's been going on. We're all living in uncertain times with recent events in Minneapolis as well as throughout the nation. I just want to thank the Braintree residents who have expressed themselves peacefully, supported their neighbors and included everyone in every aspect of daily life. Braintree is a supportive and inclusive community, and in these uncertain times, we need to come together more than ever. I don't have all the answers, but I will be happy to listen. I will do whatever I can to help. And if anybody has any things that we can do for us, the council, we will be here, we will listen, and we'll do whatever we can. I want to give thanks to the Braintree Police, the men and women serving our community, keeping us safe every day. And I know Mayor Kokoros would also like to add something. Mayor Kokoros.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, on behalf of our town leaders, I issued a statement regarding egregious misconduct of the Minneapolis police officers that resulted in the tragic death of George Floyd. The behavior of these officers constitutes a complete failure of their sworn oath to serve and protect all. I condemn their actions and offer my sincerest condolences to the family of George Floyd. The town of Braintree prides itself on being an inclusive community that serves all residents, and this sentiment is exemplified by the actions of all town departments. As matters of social justice are brought to the forefront, the importance of our constitutional right to free speech and assembly is only heightened. It is our hope that these assemblies are conducted in a way that allows the true message of the people to be heard without further acts of violence so that we may continue this important dialogue as a community. There is no place for hate, racism, and injustice in our country. And as mayor, I remain committed to continuing to fight against injustice and maintaining high standards of ethics and integrity that our community expects and deserves. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Mayor Kokoros. Moving on to announcements. So as many of you know, the mayor is putting together a master plan steering committee, and I, as the president, appoint an individual from the council to that committee. I have not made my decision on that. As soon as the committee is formed, we will have that person in place once the committee starts, and the announcement will come at a future meeting. Moving on to communications. Item 01220, Council President COVID-19 update. I will turn it over to the mayor's office. Solicitor Taub, do you want to begin this? Or Director McGrath, who would like to speak first on this?
I could give just the number update at this point.
Mayor Kokoros, go ahead.
Thank you. So we had zero cases reported today. Service continuing to go in the right direction. We have total of 851 cases that we have that have tested positive in Braintree since we started keeping track. We're at the point where we have somewhere between 80 and 100 active cases, maybe a little less. And we have a total of, unfortunately, 90 deaths. So we have, you know, more recently taken some action, canceling our traditional summer programs. And we are working with Nelson Chin, a director of Parks and Rec, to put together some programs that would be, would allow for social distancing and to protect children and the young teenagers, et cetera, that run these programs. So we'll be making an announcement within the next couple of weeks as to the new programs that we're going to put together for this summer. So at this point, you know, I just think that the continued the continued efforts on behalf of our residents in this town have brought our numbers down, and we truly appreciate all of their hard work at complying with wearing masks and a number of other things, distancing to try to keep the infection rate low. And I want to thank them personally for doing that. You know, if Mary Beth or Nicole would like to add to it. I know that we're in different phases, and Mary Beth has been working diligently getting us into the next phase. So if she wanted to give some insight onto that, that'd be great. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Kokoros. Director McGrath.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, and to the town councilors. As Mayor Kokoros mentioned, the department is actively involved in working through each of the phased reopening plans. We're now starting into Phase 2. We have started receiving industry sector requirements for each of those industry sector businesses within Phase 2. It's a lot of work on the establishment's part to be able to reopen, meeting all the requirements. But I feel that very confident that they'll be successful, and my department will absolutely be available to them, to assist them to do that. So the industry sector Phase 2 portion involves many types of establishments. It does involve a limited, actually, it allows additional allowances for lodging establishments, so the hotels in Braintree. Also allowance for outdoor seating within the restaurants as well as their continued takeout and delivery service. So we'll be working with each of the establishments regarding possibility of outdoor seating. It also involves personal care services and the extension of possibly nail salons and things of that nature, as well as recreational camps for children. We do have a few in Braintree, and they're private establishments. So we'll be working with them to try and meet all of the very stringent requirements around rec camps to see if they'd be able to operate. Also, our outdoor swimming pools, which should be semi-public swimming pools in apartment complexes and condominium complexes. There are allowances for them to reopening, to reopen under safe conditions, meeting the COVID-19 plan. And there are many other types of establishments that we'll be working with. So my department continues to work daily to get all that industry sector information out to them once we receive it, both hand carried and by email.
Thank you, Director McGrath. If I could just add, so all this information is being disseminated to the business owners. If they do need additional help, support, is that something the town's providing, or do they need to reach out to the state?
No, no, we're absolutely, we are happy to help them. By telephone, we can sit down with them. We've actually gone into establishments, reviewed their plans with them, and given them a green light to reopen in the Phase 1. So I don't see that changing for Phase 2. It is going to be a lot of work on the establishment's part to get required COVID-19 workplace safety standard plans in place. But I feel confident that all can do that and will be available to assist them. Also, Stephen Larry with the mayor's office has done a fabulous job of creating a reopening page on the town's homepage under the COVID-19 resources that indicates in each sector what the, what the sector requirements are and in which phase they would be located. So that's another resource for residents and the business community in Braintree.
Great, thank you. I know your department's been extremely busy and had to shift responsibilities with this whole COVID. So I appreciate all you've done for the residents. And now the business community has, they're trying to get back up and running because I know that especially the small business community took the biggest hit. So I'm sure they appreciate all the help that they can get with this. Anybody else from the mayor's office wish to speak on this? A COVID update? Okay, we do have Representative Mark Kuzak with us here tonight. He was going to speak to us from the state level.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President, and to each of the members. Just briefly, I have to go back to all the comments of last week. We continue to monitor the revenue picture. Again, it's not pretty, still using the $6 billion loss of revenue as a floor. But as we slowly reopen the economy, hopefully, these numbers come back to life a little bit, and we can weather this better. And still, no indication from the federal level of any assistance coming our way. Hopefully, we have some guidance soon as we're all in our budget seasons. Two important bills the House will be taking up tomorrow. One pertains to the elections this fall, the September 1st primary and the November, I believe it's 3rd, general. What the bill does is we'll mail every registered voter an absentee ballot application by July 15th to the residents. It will also provide for seven days of early voting before the September 1st primary, which has to include a weekend. And for the general election, there'll be 13 days of early voting, including two weekends. There's other provisions, and they are working with the Clerks Association. Talked to our town clerk, Mr. Casey, with some guidance there on different updates to help the towns handle this, what will be a major increase in absentee voting, but also early voting. And we're paying for all this with federal funding currently available. Some left over from modernization a couple of years ago, and others in the Care-X. The other bill, talking about small businesses that are hurting, especially the restaurant industry. The bill we're moving tomorrow will allow for outdoor, basically bypass the ABCC level and empower the local boards in each city and town to issue licenses for outdoor consumptional liquor. It will also give a local options to cities and towns to remove any zoning or temporarily suspend any zoning requirements to accommodate outdoor seating, to help these businesses. There's another provision in there, which is dubbed cocktails-to-go. Right now, you can get beer and wine. You'll also be able to get prepackaged hard liquor cocktails as long as it's in a sealed container and not accessible to the driver on transport. And the bill also puts limits on what delivery services can charge, choosing Uber Eats, Grubhub, those types of services. They're really charging a premium to the restaurants and to the customers on what they really, you know, facilitate. But we are putting a 15% limit on those kinds of companies in order to help the restaurants. This is an initial bill to help with Phase 2 of the reopening. We're continuing to work with the Commonwealth Resilience and Recovery Special Committee, which I serve on, to look at other options to help small businesses and restaurants in particular come back to life. You see estimates out there, especially nationally, anywhere from 30 to 40% of restaurants might not reopen ever again because of this economic crisis. So those are the two major updates for you, the election bill and the restaurant bill. And I'm happy to take any questions on those or any other issues.
Thank you, Representative Kuzak. I'm going to jump over to Solicitor and our Chief of Staff, Nicole Taub, to speak to this. And then we'll take questions from the council.
Thank you, Madam President. My update is actually somewhat related to Representative Kuzak's comments. As the, as the council is aware, back in March, the town sought court relief with regards to the special election scheduled on the debt exclusion. And at the time, before the legislation had been passed, the court afforded us the ability to postpone the special election to a date not to go beyond June 30. As June 30 approached and things remained fairly uncertain, on behalf of the town, I went back to court and asked the court to modify the order that was previously issued to allow us some additional flexibility in setting a date. The court has amended the order, allowing the town to reschedule the special election to a date not to go beyond, at this point, September 30, 2020. So the other provisions in the order, including the 20-day notice and approval by the council, will remain in effect. But we will continue to evaluate circumstances and determine when is the most appropriate date for us to hold the debt exclusion vote, knowing that at this point, it will have to be before September 30.
Thank you, Solicitor Taub.
Thank you.
Anybody from the council wish to comment? I will jump back to announcements. If any council has an announcement, I apologize for jumping over that. But anybody from the council have any questions, comments, who, the mayor's staff, or our state legislator? Council Erica.
Thank you, President Hume. And thank you, Mayor Kokoros, for that eloquent and important statement reaffirming Braintree's values. I really appreciate that. Mary, I have a question for Mary Beth. With, with the case count diminishing, thankfully, thank you for all the hard work. And do we have any additional provisions that we're putting in place? Or maybe you can speak a little bit about protections for nursing homes in particular, where we were so, not just Braintree, but the whole state was so hard hit? And what new or different things we're going to be able to do to help avoid that in the future? Thank you.
We, as I've mentioned in the past, we've continued to work on a daily basis with all of our long-term care facilities and assisted living facilities here in Braintree. We have probably at least eight to 10, somewhere in that range. And we continue to provide all of the guidance that we are receiving from the state, we share with them. And in addition, I must note and compliment the, all of these facilities. They share new information with us as well so that we are all on the same page with what's being done and what the response is and any new and different types of procedures that they're required to follow. As you may be aware, they, all of the nursing homes had to go through a required testing procedure for all staff and employees. The long-term care facilities did, or excuse me, the assisted living facilities did the same. And fortunately, all of the establishments appear to be definitely on a positive track with the cases that they have and the recoveries that they have. So we're really grateful to hear that. And we will continue to work with them on providing any information that we can. So some of the things that are just recently now coming out with the phased reopenings is some restrict, some, releasing some of the restrictions about visitation to nursing homes and to assisted living facilities. So it's, they're lessening, but there are still very stringent restrictions in place. And I believe that that will continue as we go through the summer and slowly be lifted as hopefully we continue to recover in a positive direction.
Thank you, Director McGrath. Anybody else from the council? Sharon, none. Okay, thank you all for those updates. We greatly appreciate you being with us every week and giving that information to us, as well as the residents at home. Anybody from the council do have an announcement? Seeing none. Okay, we will be moving on to approval of the minutes of April 28, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 28, 2020?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. Moving on to Old Business, 20038. The mayor, the FY 2021 operating budget, or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. For anybody in attendance in the public, we have quite a few tonight. If you do wish to speak, when it comes time, I will ask for anybody from the public, you raise your hand. If you are on a phone, either call or text this number. Get ready, because I'm going to give a phone number for you to call. And I will, I will, we'll unmute you when it comes to time. But we need to know your number and that you do want to speak. So call or text this number, 339-987-2726. Again, that's for the public. If you are in the public on a phone call, not on video or audio through your computer, that will go to our clerk, Sue Samino, and she will take care of everything that's necessary. With that, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there a motion to open 20038?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made to open the public hearing by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. I will refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Council Erica, for her recommendation to the full council.
Thank you so much, President Hume. The Ways and Means Committee held a series of budget hearings over nine nights in May. And on behalf of the residents, especially either watching at home or in attendance, I want to express my gratitude to the committee members, the department heads, and the mayor's office, who worked tirelessly and with unflagging diligence on this important task. I think it's fair to say that the committee put the mayor's office through its paces. We reviewed and scrutinized every line of the budget, from postage to personnel. We sent dozens of challenging questions. We pressure tested every assumption around revenue sources and income streams. And we worked hand in hand with our town auditor, Sean McGoldrick, who's in attendance tonight, who gave us professional, unbiased advice to help us make sound decisions. On behalf of the committee, I'd like to offer our sincere appreciation to the mayor and his staff, led by Nicole Taub, for their thorough and timely responses to all of our questions, for making the department directors available, and for taking our concerns seriously and always with a sense of partnership. In that spirit, I want to highlight that an overall reduction of $416,000 was made from the original proposal to the final budget presented here tonight. The bulk of the additional savings comes from a reduction in our MWRASure Assessment, which the mayor's office was able to negotiate. President Hume asked that both the councils and the town clerk's budget be reduced. And the golf department also sharpened their pencils, finding additional savings. It should be noted that over the course of the hearings, it wasn't only cuts that were made. As Mayor Kokoros noted when he presented the budget to us at the end of April, this budget preserves our critical town services at fully staffed levels. With the level of financial uncertainty facing us, there is some risk in this. But after exhaustive assessment, we believe it is the right thing to do, and it ensures that our residents have the services they count on and deserve. Additionally, on behalf of the committee and the Braintree Historical Society and its Board of Directors, I want to thank the mayor's office for preserving $10,000 of funding, which will allow the Historical Society to continue its operations in service to our community. For the residents in attendance tonight, you can be proud that the work done to iron out our town's budget was done with civility, respect, and always with your best interests in mind. So with all of that, I am delighted to say that the committee sends all aspects of the town's budget, including the CPC and the revolving accounts, to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Council Erica. And thank you to you and the Ways and Means Committee members, Council Ryan, Council Flaherty, Council Sasha, and Council Connors. I know this is no easy task, and being new councilors, you're presented with a $143 million budget. We were very fortunate to have 2.3 million in free cash to use to balance that budget. This is quite an undertaking. And so to Mayor Kokoros, to you and all your staff who worked on this from the fall to date with many, many changes due to COVID-19 epidemic and reworking it and rewriting it. And there was, I commend the Ways and Means Committee. There was a number of questions on every single, almost line item in the budget, as Chairwoman Erica said, both on the revenue side as well as the expense side. Some thoughtful questions. You represented your constituents well. And a huge thank you to Solicitor and Chief of Staff, Nicole Taub, in getting those questions answered, getting them out to all the department heads and getting them back to us. And for our clerk, Sue Samino, who was taking in all those questions, getting them to the mayor's office, and then getting them back out to the residents with us in attendance tonight, as well as those watching home. The mayor's office has put out all those questions on their website. So they will be out there for all of you to look at. I just wanted to do a special acknowledgement to all the department heads, because again, this is no easy task. And with this situation, I've been on Ways and Means for six years, and it is time consuming, and it's a lot of work and a lot of effort. So we were, you know, unusual terms. I think there was double the amount of work done. So I appreciate all the department heads for what you do every day throughout the year and especially in these unprecedented times. But here with us tonight, we have Jim Arsenault, Director of DPW, Shemilla Biswa, the Director of Elder Affairs, Karen Shanley, Director of Human Resources, Mary Beth McGrath, as you all know, she was here, Director of, totally forget, Municipal Licenses and Inspections, Christine Stickney, Director of Planning, Dr. Frank Hackett, Superintendent of Schools, Terri Stannald, Director of our Library, Fire Chief Jim O'Brien. The police chief could not be in attendance with us tonight, Marc Dubois. Representing the town clerk's office tonight is Deb Starr. Darren Brown with the golf department is here. Director of Municipal Finance, Ed Spellman. Nelson Chin, Director of Parks and Recs Recreation. Tom Devon, Chairman of the School Committee. George Kokoros, Member of the School Committee. And the mayor's office, your staff, Steve Leary. It's not in a, well, maybe he is in attendance tonight. I just don't see his name. But thank you to Steve Leary and Andrew Marin, who was with the mayor's office, now is with the school department. But all these meetings would not be possible without Steve and Andrew's support on the backend and getting us up and running and selecting the device. So to all of them for keeping everybody safe and still being able to conduct the town business. Thank you to all of them. So with that, is there anybody from the mayor's office who would like to speak on order 20038?
Thank you, Madam President.
Mayor Kokoros.
Thank you. And thank you for recognizing my staff members. We also have Lorraine C., who was our grant writer. I have Kate Naughton, who is Services Coordinator, who's also here. I think you did mention Darren Brown, who's doing a spectacular job over at the golf course there. First, you know, being my first budget, I just want to start off by, you know, thanking you and the Ways and Means Committee. What an amazing job that you have done. Many new folks, but such a thorough job. And for this to be your first budget during COVID-19 pandemic, during the new mayor, et cetera. I mean, it's just amazing the amount of work that you put in, and I really want to commend you. The amount of questions were incredibly, there was such a high volume of questions that were excellent questions. And I was just glad that there was so much involvement and back and forth and information shared. And, you know, I especially want to thank Chairman Meredith Erica, because, you know, you did a great job as your first role as chairperson of the Ways and Means, which is one of the toughest committees, a committee that I never actually served on in my 12 years because I understood the amount of time that was spent. And I just want to congratulate you on doing such a great job. And I just want to congratulate you on doing such a great job. We are fortunate to have, you know, such a great staff, as you had introduced tonight. And, you know, quite frankly, when we started this process, it was sometime right after, I think it was the Wednesday after the election, when I started looking at the numbers, and, which eventually brought us to the point where we were looking at taking the South Project out into a separate debt exclusion, and which we did. And at that point, when the budget was first being reviewed, I was looking for a 1% cut across the board based on some of the finances and the numbers that were coming down for the 2021 budget. So that was pre-COVID-19 pandemic. So it was amazing, the amount of work that went into that in itself from the very beginning. I will say that through that, and through all of that work, and all of those exercises, and looking at the numbers, and, you know, making some assumptions on numbers that we really didn't even have definitive at that point, it allowed me as mayor and my staff the opportunity to really be able to dig deep, not only in the 2020 budget, as you saw in the supplemental version that you approved, but also in the 2021 budget. As far as from the operational side, we wanted to make sure that we provided the full level of services to every resident of the town of Braintree. And we were able to, through working together as a team, we were able to do so much and accomplish so much. And a top priority, always for myself, and I know for the council and the residents of the town, our schools, they're a very important piece. And I'm happy to say that, you know, we are funding $73,218,000 or 51% of the budget to maintain a high level of services provided by our teachers and administrators to make sure that every child gets the best education here in Braintree. And I commend Dr. Hackett, Chairman Devon, and the entire school committee for their hard work to make sure that we provided the best level of education and made sure that we managed the budget, so, to have that happen. So I'm very proud of that. In addition, our overall, our total budget is $143,355,450, which is only a 2.83% increase over our 2020 budget. It's one of the lowest increases we've had in years. And to get to that number, it was a lot of work. And that work began with my Chief of Staff and Finance Director, Ed Spellman, Nicole Taub, worked together with each and every department head. And these department heads worked through, and the team effort put in, we were able to move from the 1% reduction to up to 4% reduction in many of the different budgets that were originally proposed back in the beginning of our 2021 budget analysis. So I will say, on the services side, I think this is a solid budget funding. All of our necessary services, our DPW, our police, our fire, library, obviously our schools, and many other areas of the town that are important to make sure that the residents have all the services that they need. In addition, we are working on looking at finding cost-saving measures on the trash and recycling program. We did not raise the trash fee. We've had an escalation over the past several years, and we are looking to find a way of creating savings as opposed to looking at raising the fee at this point. So we move forward without doing that, and I'm committed to working with my staff to come up with some plans to try to reduce those costs so that we can restore some of that money back to the general fund that is offsetting the cost of trash in recycling. In regards to the original numbers in the budget, one of which, there was a $381,200 reduction. That was the MWRA. The MWRA came in, made a commitment to us that they have a very stable increase program, in which they call it the 3% program. Well, we came, we were given an estimate that was far greater than that. We made some, we made the initial adjustment to our budget so that it took into account this large increase in our MWRA assessment. But we worked with them, and in the end, our assessment was reduced, and that's why you see a reduction of 381,200. That, we weren't willing to just accept the number that was estimated initially. And I thank my DPW Director, Jim Arsenal, Nicole Taub, and Ed Spellman for working towards getting this number reduced, and it did happen. The town council has a reduction of $14,747, and I commend the town council for making that happen. And golf has a reduction of $20,753. I'm trying to maintain the budget cuts across the board. Even though it is an enterprise fund, it still shows good faith. So when we started, we had, when I started my term, we had $9.3 million in free cash, and COVID happened. So with this pandemic, it was fortunate that we did have free cash available to help us with some of these challenges. And I am happy to say that even with the free cash that was used, not only to supplement the 2020 budget, to contribute to our capital plan, and also supplement the 21 budget, we still have a balance of approximately $5.3 million. And I intend, that number should and will go up as we see savings that we have put into place during this 2020 budget. And those savings will create more reserve as we go into the 2021 budget. So taking a very conservative approach from the beginning. And fortunately, we were able to utilize that conservative approach to get to this point, because we didn't want, didn't want to have a 1/12 budget. We had that option. We really wanted to put together the best budget that provides all the services for the residents and allow us to move forward throughout the year. We know there's uncertainty. So as far as the, as far as the revenue sources, we looked at making some reductions in our, in our future prospects for revenues. And, you know, one of those areas was a meals tax. We reduced the meals tax by 25%. Typically, the meals tax goes up every year. We reduced the hotel motel tax by 50%. We have at least one hotel that went offline, Hyatt, to renovate, and that will, that should be coming back online soon. And, you know, as things start to turn, you know, come back to a little bit more normal, we should see some, those numbers change. But we left those numbers very low so that we could have a conservative approach and make sure that we could meet the markers and hopefully exceed them. As well, interest income, we reduced by 75% because those numbers that we were seeing before COVID are not there, and we wanted to make sure that we had realistic estimates. So overall, as far as the town of Braintree is concerned, right now, I will tell you that, you know, there's obviously a negative outlook for everyone right now, throughout, not just Braintree, but throughout the entire state and nation. But the town of Braintree has successfully completed the analysis through standard reports, and we have maintained a AA+ bond rating, which is spectacular, because that bond rating allows us to borrow at a much lower rate. And I'm very proud to say, through the hard work of the department heads, through the hard work of Ed Spellman, Barbara Walls, Nicole Taub, Bob Brinkman, and quite frankly, really, the hard work of you as counselors and the Ways and Means Committee to make sure that we stay on track with a very reasonable and conservative approach, we have maintained that AA+ bond rating. And I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention tonight. It's a big win for Braintree, and we are very happy to have that. So as far as the budget overall, I feel confident in my first budget. And I just want to say that, you know, Braintree is moving forward. And I think what we have set in place with this budget will provide the services necessary for our residents. And quite frankly, we have not laid off anyone. We have not. We have utilized some of our free cash to make sure that we have teachers and DPW workers in police and fire. So that's what it's there for, and we have utilized it to the best of our ability. So I feel very confident in the numbers, and I hope that you do as well. And I ask tonight, the full council, to join in with the Ways and Means and unanimously approve this budget. And I thank you for taking the time to listen to me. And it is my honor, as mayor, to present to you my first budget for the town of Braintree. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Kokoros, and congratulations on getting through your first budget. Appreciate it. I just want to add one thing, and then I'm going to go to Council Ryan. To your point, the Town Clerk's Office and the Town Council Office, obviously, all fall under ours. When it became aware that all departments were asked to cut, we followed suit. We responded accordingly with all other departments, and Ways and Means agreed to that. So we were happy to do so, and thank you to the Town Clerk's Office in doing that as well. We talk about all the money and the funding and all that thing, but what's not always talked about, and we can take for granted, all the assets we do have in the town, all the services, the public schools, our Special Education Department, the library, all the books and the programming that they have, the friends at their public library who provide all those programming. Our golf course, there's not many communities that have a golf course that provides so much recreation, whether you're a golfer, a, you know, snow skiing or cross-country skiing. They've expanded what they're doing. We have many parks and playgrounds and fields and things like that for people of all ages throughout the community, for a number of different activities. We actually have a beach here in Braintree, and Sunset Lake. What that's going to look like, the use of those in the summer, we will wait and see. But our police and fire, our first responders, we have a lake department and water department. Those are all services that we are so grateful for and are so lucky to have all those. You can't put a dollar figure on those. We're fortunate that the funding is in place, and that we have it, and there is a slight increase. And I am truly grateful, Mayor Coros, to you and your staff for retaining all the staff in all those departments. Because at the start of this, I wanted to keep intact our employees and cut where we could cut financially without losing our employees. Because without our employees, we aren't the best community that we are. And we do all of that, all of which you mentioned, with the Ways and Means went over, with one of the lowest tax rates around in this Commonwealth. So it is truly, we are truly a very fortunate community in these times, as well as, you know, in every other day. So with that, I will turn it over to Council Ryan. Thank you for your patience. You've had your hand raised for a while.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to say, this was my first experience being on the Ways and Means Committee, and it was a very, very rewarding experience. I want to commend Mayor Kokoros and his staff for the budget that they submitted. They were able to cut the budget in a very surgical way, where they protected and maintained services. They looked out for the employees of the town. And I think they've done a great job, and it really shows the mayor's experience from being on the town council for 12 years and being a selectman. I think it really came through with this budget. So I would like to say the mayor hit the ground running with this budget, and I want to commend him for that. And I want to say, his staff, especially Nicole Taub, with all those Ways and Means meetings we had over the last four weeks, they were very, they were tough meetings to sit through. They were every night, long meetings. And that leads me to the Ways and Means members that I served with. I got on the Ways and Means Committee with four brand-new counselors, and they did a great job, and I'm thoroughly impressed with the work they did and the homework and the questions they asked. And I felt like we did a great job, and it was really because of the four new councils we did such a good job, that really asked a lot of questions and a lot of tough questions, and they drilled down into the budget very well. And I'm very confident we have a great budget here tonight, and I'm going to fully support this budget. So thanks to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Ryan. Council Connors, do you have your hand raised?
Thank you. So I just want to reiterate that we definitely learned a lot during this process. Mayor Coros and Nicole, you guys, you guys really worked it with answering our questions with all the newbies, as I call us. There were some concerns that were raised with the revenues that are coming in potentially lower, including state funding. That's still a question up in the air. The sale of Allen Street is still really a question up in the air. It's going up for bid this year. A court case over the billboards, overtime funding for the police and fire, whether or not that was, we know that's a questionable one. We have a plan in place to mitigate that. So all these concerns were brought up. They are unknowns at this time. And my end result in voting yes for this was basically, we know we have revenue issues. We have a rainy day fund, basically, or free cash that can cover it. That's what it's here for. Mayor Coros, like you said, this is your first budget. We definitely have some issues that need to be resolved over the next year. So this annual budget, even though we approve it tonight, which I will support, we still have a lot of work ahead of us in the next year to get things back a little bit more in control, a little bit more financially secure, so that two to three years, when our free cash becomes a serious issue, we are prepared for it. And that's, that's really all I have to say. You guys did a great job. Really, I can't say enough about answering our questions 24/7, helping us try to figure out all these salaries and ratings and all of that. And we did, the Ways and Means Committee did ask for a couple of things, which we will continue to ask for. A high-level monthly update of budget versus actuals. We also asked for another meeting in six months, a sit-down, go-through where we are meeting in six months, so we can monitor where the different funds are, the Allen Street, the billboard, the overtime, and just kind of get a feel for where we are, so we can be prepared. And I think if we can do those, I think that will really help us coming up for the next year's budget. And that's all I had to say. So thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone on the Ways and Means, for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Connors. I just want to recognize Sean McGoldrick, who is the Town Counselor's Auditor there with the firm Clifton Larson Allen. Sean McGoldrick, thank you for always being there and supporting and answering the Ways and Means and Councilor Committee. And also Bob Brinkman. He was in the attending, attendance with the public. I moved him over to the panelists. So Bob Brinkman with the Assessor's Office is also with us here tonight. I'm going to go to Solicitor Taub, and then Council Mackin had his hand up. Council Taub.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I did just want to clarify for the members of the council that I am joined in person this evening by Ed Spellman. Didn't want anybody to think that he would miss his, I don't know how many budget presentations he's been through. So just 12 budget presentations. So you don't see a square, but he is here and available if there are any questions. And I'm also joined in person here in Johnson Chambers by Darren Brown, Director of Operations at the golf course. So I just wanted to note for the record that both individuals are in attendance and available if need be. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Council Mackin, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Quick question before. I know, is this, there's six motions tonight. Is this to speak on, will there be different chances to speak? Each one, or should I just say anything? I have to say no.
We're in 2003. We're in 2003-8.
Okay.
You're operating budgets, so if it's specific to the budget, yeah, you can talk now, but during each item, you can talk as well.
Got it. All right. So let me start by saying, you know, thank you to everyone who was involved in creating this. I know a ton of work went into it, has been, has been outlined before, but I do have concerns that I need to raise, and have been touched on already. I'll just put my own perspective on them. I do think this budget is too free cash reliant. You know, our current free cash is about 9.2 million. We have about 2.3 as a line item for revenue. We also spent approximately 2 million last week between the capital plan and supplemental appropriations. Now, per the auditor's report, there's also 2.3 million worth of revenues, which may never materialize, in which case that money also comes out of free cash most likely. Therefore, there's a potential to spend approximately 6.6 million out of 9.2 million of our free cash in one year. As has been pointed out, it is a rainy day fund to use when we needed it, but what if it keeps raining next year, but we spent almost all of it this year? Well, there are, I understand the work that has gone into reductions of expenses, but in my opinion, those do not match up with the decrease, decreases in revenue projections. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. The recession caused by COVID could last an unknown time. Income from meals and hotels could create, decrease even more than expected and take longer to rebound. We really don't know. You know, there's talk of local aid from the state, but the state's having their own revenue shortfalls, as we heard before from our representative local agent, Cupper Ford. It could be cut again. You know, in addition, the state and federal money that was designated for COVID relief may suddenly have to be appropriated for damage caused by the riots the last several days. And my point is, you know, we're going into revenue in certain times. Schools have been closed for three months. Many businesses are still closed, and many of them will not be reopening. There's people still walking around with masks on. I've, I have put a lot of time and deliberation on this budget, but my career's been in business, and I need to look at it through those goggles, being financially prudent. I'll be voting no. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Mackin. Council Sasha, you had your hand raised next, and then I will get to Council Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I think a lot of us are talking about the same issues, and, and they're issues that we, we hashed out in, in a lot of detail in Ways and Means Committee meetings. And one thing I just wanted to point out is that, well, two things. First is that there, we are all concerned about the reliance on free cash, and we've expressed those concerns again and again. But I think where a lot of us ended up kind of uncomfortable with in the beginning and getting more comfortable towards the end of those Ways and Means Committee meetings was first hearing the Town Auditor say, yes, this is something that needs to be addressed, but not necessarily in fiscal year '21, or even '22 or '23. So, you know, I have come to trust and value their unbiased assessment, so that helped me. The other thing was that there is so much unknown. We had actually a lot of debate about the revenue sources, and not just were any of them possibly overestimated, but were some of them underestimated. And what we finally decided was, nobody knows. Nobody knows what's going to happen in a couple of months. We don't know if there's state aid. We don't know if there's federal aid. The easy thing to do right now would be to raise, say, the trash fee or something like that. And I think where I finally came down with all of this is that this is a very balanced view for the next year, given the uncertainty. And the mayor has committed to certain cost reductions and, and to getting back together with the Ways and Means Committee during the year to make sure that we're on track. And that makes me a little bit more comfortable that we have our eye on that long-term picture, and, and we are not going to put ourselves in a position where, where we are unable to meet future obligations. So I will be supporting the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Sasha. Council Flaherty.
So I, I'm unmuted now, right?
Yep.
Okay. So I attended the Ways and Means Committee meetings, and I will tell you that if you want to learn something about a town, you scrutinize their, the budget at the level that we did. Every single line item for every single department was looked at, questions about paper usage, and, and every other thing that you can think of were all tested, and, and the questions were all answered. So what I can say is that we universally share these revenue concerns. The billboard revenue is up in the air. We may or may not see it. And the, the sale of town land is also up in the air. We may or may not see that money. I hope that we will. And state aid, those numbers are squishy right now. We don't really know what it's going to be, and we don't know what it's going to be like next year. There's this whole ocean of information that we don't have. And so the question that eventually crystallized for us was, what is our responsibility as a council and as a town, as, you know, with, with this budget? Is it, and, and what is the most responsible way to move forward? And what it comes down to for me is that our job is to take care of the residents who live in Braintree and ensure that they have the essential services that we provide, all of the education, all of the fire, all of the police, the library, the trash, all of those things that everybody needs as of, to have the quality of life that we're accustomed to in this town. Our job is to ensure that we meet those services to the best of our ability, and our job is to make sure that we leave this town in good fiscal condition. So what's the most responsible route to meeting those two sometimes competing demands? Do we cut the budget by $2.3 million and accept the austerity that that would present? And in, and, you know, by making the corresponding cuts in our schools and in our police and in our fire and across the board? Do we make those cuts now so that we can keep our rainy day fund intact and not spend that money? And the answer for me is that it's not time yet to introduce that level of austerity in this budget. It's time to use the rainy day fund. We call it free cash, but other people call it rainy day funds, and nobody disputes that it's raining. And nobody knows when the rain is going to stop, and those cuts really might have to be made at some point. Sean McGoldrick made a really excellent point when he said that this town is not raising revenue at the same rate that it is appropriating money, and that that is not a trend that can continue. But making the cuts now takes a bad situation and makes it worse, and that's why I'm going to support this budget as a stance, because I think that is a prudent way to move forward. I think it's presented to us in good faith, and I think that we owe it to our residents not to make cuts in haste out of fear of the future, and that's why I'm going to support this budget.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Anybody, any other council was to speak on this matter? Seeing none. I'm going to turn it over to the public. Anybody from the public who is here in attendance wish to speak? If you do so, please raise your hand through the Zoom. Okay. Seeing none. With that, I will turn it over to Council Ringus for his comments and some items to be taken care of.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I just want to piggyback on what a lot of people said tonight. Thank you to Make a Course, you know, starting off this first term, to kind of come into a pandemic, and then some issues as to where we're going to be budget-wise. And I think you and your staff did a wonderful job, so thank you to you and to your department heads. Like many have, I wanted to specifically know Council Baraka to come into your first council time and chair the Ways and Means in the way that you did. You really sort of excelled and held yourself to a very high standard. So thank you for your work and the work of all the members of the Ways and Means Committee. I know as some people have indicated, there are some questions about, about what, what the future is going to look like, and some of these questions specifically as to Allen Street and the billboards. But I am, I'm confident in this budget, and I will be moving affirmatively on it tonight. Before we close the public hearing, though, the originally submitted budget by the mayor on April 28th of 2020, obviously, as we discussed tonight, had some changes. So I do need to go through and read into the record what some of those changes were. So kind of going through here in terms of department and programs, under 111 Town Council Programs, the originally proposed for FY 2021 was $315,483. The revised amount is now $302,736, with a change of $12,747. Under 121 Mayor's Office Programs, the FY 2021 original was $511,609. There's no change there. Under 133 Finance Programs, the originally proposed amount with no change here either is $10,946,948. Under 151 Law, the amount proposed with no change is $182,450. Under 152 Human Resources Programs, it was $22,492,842. That was proposed, and there was no changes. As to 161 Town Clerk, the originally proposed amount was $454,519. That amount has been revised to $442,519, with a change of $12,000 in the downward. As to 175 Planning and Community Development, the originally proposed FY 2021 amount was Revised amount is $630,674. That line is going up $10,000 from the original proposal. As to 210 Police, the originally proposed and amount staying the same is $11,180,117. As to 220 Fire, the original proposed amount and staying the same is $8,850,625. As to 241 Municipal License and Inspection, the proposed number and which will be staying the same is $1,087,78. Under 300, which is Education, $73,218,902. That was proposed and is staying the same. Under 350 Blue Hills Regional, it was the proposed amount of $2,672,573, which will be staying. Under 400 Public Works Department, the originally proposed amount was $8,973,466, which will be staying the same. Under 541 Elder Affairs, the originally proposed amount was $330,558, which will be staying the same. Under 610 Library, the originally proposed amount was $1,538,653. For a total general fund amount originally proposed of $143,370,197, the revised FY 2020 amount for the total general fund is $143,355,450, with revised amounts in the downward of $14,747. Moving on to various funds, as to 400 Total Golf Fund, the FY 2021 originally proposed amount was $1,970,153. That has been revised to $1,949,400 for reduction, a revised amount of $20,753. Under 436 Total Water Sore Fund, the originally proposed amount was $20,911,856. That has been revised to $20,530,656, for a total change in the downward of $381,200. As to 438 Total Stormwater Fund, the originally proposed and amount staying the same is $907,455. And as to 690 Total Cable Television Fund, $517,440 was originally proposed, and that is the amount that we are moving forward with. The total for all of these funds is $167,677,101,000. Originally proposed, revised amount is $167,260,401, for a reduction or change in the downward of $416,700. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Council Ringus. With that, is there anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So I'll move, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus to close the public hearing, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Council Baraka?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Council Ringus, is there a motion for order 2003-8?
There is, Madam President, and there will be six of these, and we'll need a roll call vote on each. So number one, that the town of Braintree raise and appropriate the sum of $143,355,450 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's several departments and programs for the fiscal year 2021, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes and are subject to the source of funding for set expenditures as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $101,26 be transferred from golf course receipts, the sum of $250,000 be transferred from the overlay surplus account, the sum of $9,700 be transferred from the waterways improvement fund, the sum of $22,000 be transferred from the sale of cemetery lots, the sum of $832,994 be transferred from water and sewer receipts, the sum of $33,606 be transferred from stormwater receipts, the sum of $1,300,000 to be transferred from the town-owned land account, the sum of $2,338,294 to be transferred from the FY 2019 certified free cash, and the balance to be raised in the tax levy.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Baraka?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Nay.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
That's eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. That motion passes. Council Ringus.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $1,949,400 to provide for all the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's golf course and related programs for the fiscal year 2021, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $1,949,400 be raised in the golf course receipts.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Council Baraka?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Four.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Council Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor?
That is unanimous. Thank you. Council Ringus.
Madam President, I would move that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of $20,530,656 to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's water and sewer division and related programs for the fiscal year 2021, and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of $103,694 be transferred from the water and sewer rehabilitation fund, and the balance of $20,426,962 be raised in the water and sewer receipts.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Council Baraka?
Yes.
Council Connors?
Aye.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume? Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor.
Nine zero, that is unanimous. Thank you, Clerk Samino. Councilor Ringus, next item.
Madam President, I would move that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of nine hundred and seven thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's stormwater division and related programs for the year two thousand twenty-one and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically and that the sum of nine hundred and seven thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars be raised in the stormwater receipts.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor.
That is unanimous. Thank you, Clerk Samino. Councilor Ringus?
Madam President, I would move that the town of Braintree appropriate the sum of five hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and forty dollars provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's cable television, public education, and government access and related programs for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one and that the several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes as outlined on the attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of five hundred seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars be raised in the cable franchise fees receipts.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Councilor Ringus?
And Madam President, I would move that pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one D, the town is authorized to incur a liability in excess of the amount appropriated on ice for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Sorry, aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And with that, we have officially approved FY two thousand twenty-one operating budget as presented to us by Mayor Kokoros and his staff. So thank you again. Congratulations, Mayor Kokoros, Solicitor Tom, and Director Sbedlin and all, everybody in attendance. With that, moving on to item two zero zero three nine, the mayor FY two thousand twenty-one budget, the Community Preservation Committee or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus to open the public hearing, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. That was unanimous. With that, I will re- refer to the Chairwoman, Councilor Berika, uh, to the ways and means for the recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume. Um, as stated earlier this evening, uh, the Committee of Ways and Means reviewed this budget in full and thoroughly and we are sending it to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilor Berika. Anybody from the mayor's office wish to speak on item two zero zero three nine? Seeing, yeah, no, okay, seeing none. Anybody from the council wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Anybody from the public who's in attendance wish to speak on item two zero zero three nine in the Community Preservation Committee? Seeing none. One last opportunity for the council to speak. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion on order? Two zero zero three nine. Councilor Ringus?
Yes, Madam President, similar to the last, there will be five different motions that all need roll call votes. So first, I would move in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Housing Reserve for acquisition, creation, preservation, or support of community housing or the rehabilitation or restoration of community housing that is acquired or created as provided in Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Nay.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you. Councilor Ringus, next item.
Uh, Madam President, I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Open Space Reserve for the acquisition, creation, or preservation of open space or the rehabilitation or restoration of open space that is acquired or created as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Ri- Ringus?
Uh, Madam President, I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five S, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Historic Resources Reserve for the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, or restoration of historic resources as provided in Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Ringus?
Madam President, thank you. In accordance with, I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section five, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of four hundred thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Budget Reserve as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Ringus?
Uh, Madam President, I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of forty-five thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one Administrative Operating Fund as provided in Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five. Said funds to be expended under the direction of Community Preservation Committee and by the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Unanimous, thank you. It was five. Okay, moving on to item twenty two zero zero four zero, the mayor, the FY two thousand twenty-one budget, the revolving accounts or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion to open the public hearing by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. At this time, I will refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, Councilor Berika, for your recommendation to the full council.
Thank you, President Hume. Um, as stated earlier, the committee reviewed all of the revolving funds, accounts, budgets thoroughly um, and we are sending this to the full council with unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilor Berika. Anyone from the mayor's office wish to speak on this? Seeing none. Any council, counselor wish to speak on this? Councilor Connors, go ahead.
So I just wanted to um, say that on the revolving funds, we had talked to about the golf fund snack bar becoming a revolving fund or at least looking into it versus it being budgeted through the um, town next year. So that is one of the recommendations that I would ask that the mayor's office go back and start looking at is to get that into now that we're going to be established and up and running, that it become more of a revolving fund versus a um, enterprise fund or budgeted through, sorry, budgeted through the um, golf.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other council wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll now open it up to the public. Anybody from the public in attendance wish to speak on item two zero zero four zero, the revolving fa- accounts? Seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
There's been a motion to close the public hearing by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. Counselor Ringus, is there a motion for order two zero zero four zero?
Uh, there will be uh, eight motions to follow, all which will have a roll call votes, Madam President. So for the first, I would move that the Department of Elder Affairs be authorized to use revolving a fund in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half that may be spent by the Department of Elder Affairs without further appropriation during the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and twenty to pay salaries, expenses, and contractual services required to provide services and activities for the town's elderly residents. The Department of Elder Affairs revolving fund is to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from persons using said programs. The Department of Elder Affairs may spend up to thirty thousand dollars in revolving fund monies during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Counselor Ringus?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would move that the Board of Health be authorized to use a revolving fund in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half that may be spent by the Board of Health without further appropriation during the fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand twenty to pay for salaries, expenses, and contractual services associated with purchasing, promoting, administering public health immunizations for public health education programs. The Board of Health revolving fund is to be credited with all fees and charges collected during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one for immunizations administered under the Department of Public Health. The Board of Health may spend up to fifty thousand dollars in revolving fund monies during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, a roll call, please.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Ringus, next item.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would move that the library trustees be authorized to use a revolving fund in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half that may be spent by the library trustees without further appropriation during the fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand twenty for the purchases of library books, audiovisual materials, and other materials. The library trustees revolving fund is to be credited with all fines and fees collected during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one for lost or overdue library materials. The library trustees may spend up to forty-five thousand dollars in revolving fund monies during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Councilor Ringus, seconded by Councilor Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll, excuse me, roll call vote.
Councilor Berika?
Yes.
Councilor Connors?
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin? Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Sasha?
Yes.
That's nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. Counselor Ringus?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would further move that the library trust- Hold up one second, my fault. Sorry, that the library trustees be authorized to use a revolving fund in accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half and a half, that may be spent by the library trustees without further appropriation during the fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand and twenty, for the costs associated with the support and promotion of special programs, including salaries related thereto. The library trustees revolving fund is to be credited with all revenue from the rental of meeting rooms collected during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The library trustees may spend up to five thousand dollars in revolving fund monies during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Counselor Ringus, next item.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the mayor be authorized to use a revolving fund in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, that may be spent by the mayor in conjunction with the recycling coordinator without further appropriation during the fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand twenty, for the purchase of home composting bins, curbside recycling bins, recycling bags, and for the collection of fees and payments for recycling materials, including hazardous waste. The recycling revolving fund is to be credited with all fees collected during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The mayor may spend up to two thousand dollars in revolving fund monies during fiscal year two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Council Ringus, seconded by Council Ryan. Clerk Samino, roll call, please.
Council Erica.
Yes.
Council Connors.
Aye.
Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Hume.
Aye.
Council Mackin.
Aye.
Council O'Brien.
Aye.
Council Ringus.
Aye.
Council Ryan.
Aye.
Council Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Counselor Ringus, next item.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the mayor be authorized to use a revolving fund in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, that may be spent by the mayor in conjunction with the recycling coordinator without further appropriation during the fiscal year commencing July one,